All right, everybody. Welcome to the January meeting. Kent Planning Board, please stand.
Let's lead this to the land that exists in America and to the public for which stands one nation under God invisible, delivering justice for all.
All right. All right, so we have the first. We're gonna do, uh, she said, White Vernon. We're gonna do White Vernon first. We should change it again?
No.
I was gonna say. All right, uh, White Vernon property? Anybody here for, that's who we have?
Yeah, right here.
Oh, yeah, like this. What, you got a different agenda?
Hello.
How are you?
Howdy.
Doing well. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Frank J. Smith III from the Law Office of Schilling &amp; Smith on behalf of the applicants Madeline White and Tristan Vernon. I'm accompanied this evening by project engineer Jack Correll. The property in question is known as Tax Map Number 33 Dot Dash One Dash Fifty-Eight Point Two. It consists of roughly forty acres and is located in the town's R40 zoning district. The relief requested this evening is a variance pursuant to Town Code Section Fifty-Seven Dash Twenty-Nine C to permit a ten-foot-wide driveway instead of a twelve-foot-wide driveway. Previously, in furtherance of the project, I appeared before a meeting of the planning board consultants, and last week, my partner Bill Schilling and Mr. Correll appeared before this board's workshop. First, a brief history. My clients have been in contract to purchase this parcel for more than three years. They seek to develop a single-family residence on the lot. The parcel obtains access by horse-pound road through a twenty-five-foot right-of-way over the lands of the New York City DEP. That land owned by the DEP is encumbered by a New York State DEC Conservation Easement. The right-of-way and conservation easement have been amended to permit utilities along with ingress and egress. My understanding is that the DEC has executed these documents, they have been sent to the DEP, and the DEP has not executed them yet. The reason for the DEP not executing the documents is during their review, they noticed that the town of Kent requires a twelve-foot-wide driveway, and the conservation easement only permits for a ten-foot-wide driveway. After I had met with the planning consultants, we discussed Section Fifty-Seven Dash Twenty-Nine C and how this board can vary dimensional requirements in the code, and that's why we're here tonight. Under that code section, there are four criteria to consider when determining whether to vary dimensional requirements. First is whether unique or peculiar conditions make it impracticable to follow the strict letter of the specifications without causing significant hardship to the property owner. Second, issuing the waiver or modification will not establish a precedent which tends to encourage efforts to avoid the standards established in this chapter of the code. Third, that the waiver or modification is not contrary to the interests of public health, safety, and welfare. And fourth, the planning board must balance the interests of the public against those of the applicant, and the planning board must find that the detriment to be suffered by the public, if any, by granting of the waiver or modification, is not greater than the benefit to the applicant. By letters submitted to this board on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, I went through all four criteria and argued why I thought they were met. I know the board has a stiff agenda tonight, and out of respect for your time, I can go through all four of those criteria again if you'd like, or you can accept my written submission, whichever you prefer, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, we'll accept it.
Okay. So, based upon the four criteria, I do not believe that it is, uh, in, against the interest of the town to grant this variance. It is a two-foot difference. In my opinion, it's de minimis. I don't believe that there will be a strong precedential value based upon the factual circumstances with access being granted over the lands of New York City and those lands being encumbered by a New York State DEC Conservation Easement. Uh, the residential site plan was previously approved. Again, it's just a two-foot modification of the driveway itself within the twenty-five-foot right-of-way, and for those reasons and based upon prior submissions, I respectfully request that the board grant the variance in question. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, my name is John Andrews. I serve as engineer to the planning board. Uh, I won't repeat a lot of what Mr. Smith went through, but there are a couple things that we, um, that we do need to review. You have a memo from me. Um, and, uh, what they're proposing is a ten-foot-wide driveway. What is shown on the plant is a ten-foot driveway, wide driveway with a standard town pull-off at a reasonable location. So, the driveway as shown complies with the code. What we will need is that the project sponsor will need to confirm that the EP is okay with the ten-foot driveway and that the pull-off as indicated. Um, we had recommended, and it's in process, that, uh, both the highway superintendent and the responding fire district, uh, be contacted. We have it on good authority that the fire district has given a verbal okay, but we would prefer to see that in writing. We have not yet heard from the highway superintendent. Um, we take, as the, as the town in, the planning board's engineer, we take no exception to the planning board granting the modification, uh, and we offer the following, and I'm gonna, I am gonna go through the four items because I think it's important for you folks to, to hear it. Um, item number one, the circumstances surrounding this access easement are unique. Um, the underlying land is owned by New York City DEP and is further burdened by New York State DEC Conservation Easement, which only permits the ten-foot width. The difficulty encountered and the time spent obtaining the ability to merely install the utilities would be increased by starting over just to obtain a twelve-foot width. Um, second, the modification is not likely to be considered precedent-setting, given the unique circumstances of this right-of-way. Even though there is a lot of DEP land in the town, there are not many parcels that are situated such as this, which rely on such an easement. So, it's, it's not precedent-setting. And I would submit, so long as the fire district is satisfied with the access afforded by the ten-foot width, the, the modification would not be considered contrary to the interests of the public health, safety, and welfare. Emergency response access is maintained. Utility access is no longer necessary, uh, which thereby eliminates a, a further wetland disturbance. So, there might be something positive here. And lastly, I cannot identify a detriment to be suffered by the public by granting the requested modification. Um, the project sponsor already has his approvals. He can use the right-of-way as it is to build his house. He has an alternate utility route, which if this board did approve, that utility route unfortunately required a wetland permit, which he did obtain, and requires potential, um, uh, detriment to the wetlands even. However, so one could argue that granting the modification would actually result in a public benefit. Uh, the other issue is the planning board held a public hearing, um, on the original project back in May. Um, there was overwhelming public silence. There was no public comment on this particular action. Um, since you would be amending the permit, you would need, you have the option of holding a public hearing. We would recommend, uh, that you waive the public hearing in this particular case, given the fact that nobody commented the first time, they're not likely to comment the second time. Um, and, and lastly, there is a reminder that they still have to obtain a necessary coverage once all this is done. So, on, on that basis, what I would, what I would like you to consider this evening is number one, does the rationale that was put forth regarding the four conditions that must be satisfied make sense to you? And if it does, they will appear in a resolution should you want one formed. And the second thing I would ask you to do this evening is determine whether or not a public hearing is required, and if you believe it not to be required, um, that you authorize waiving the public hearing in this circumstance, both of which, if, when you're all done with those two items, if you are so inclined, we would, uh, request to be empowered to craft a resolution granting the waiver for your consideration at next meeting.
Okay, so waive the public hearing is one. Correct?
Uh, the first one would be, does, does rationale on the four conditions seem reasonable to you? I, you know, and, and if so, they would be your basis for granting the waiver.
Okay. All right. And then we'd waive the public hearing.
Then waive the public hearing and then authorize preparation of the resolution.
Good enough. I'll make that motion. I'll make the motion to waive the public hearing. Does anybody vote?
Second. Aye.
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 Aye. Passed. Uh, I'll make the motion also in regards to authorizing John, is it John, you and Bruce?
Yes, sir.
You and Bruce to, to what you gotta do.
Okay. And I didn't mean to steal Bruce's thunder. Bruce had a memo also, and I, I neglected.
Yeah, pretty much. I'll make that motion. Uh, we'll second it.
I'll second.
Uh, let's make a vote. Aye.
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 Good enough. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a nice night.
Take it easy.
Thank you.
Have a good one. All right, so that's one. Next on top would be Holly Property.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening. I'm representing the Hollies. My name is Bob Bradley. As I think everyone is aware by now, we have, uh, the Holly Zone property of Towners Road, and they're building three twelve, um, three two-bedroom units in four, in four blocks.
Yeah, talk a little louder.
So, it would be twelve. It would be twelve units.
Okay.
And, uh, we have tonight, I guess we have a, uh, final disposition of this, hopefully we, for the planning board. Um, I see the only blanks on here are from the, uh, bonds. I'm sure that's been.
Right.
Okay.
You going first?
Sure.
All right, take your pen.
That's okay.
Should I sign you guys in too?
Yeah, we can.
Good evening all. I'm Bruce Barber, the town's environmental planning consultant. Uh, this is a project that's been before the board, uh, for quite some time, and tonight we're gonna be taking a look at three different components. Number one would be a derivation of the bonds that are associated with a particular project, which John is gonna discuss with you. Number two has to do with the acceptance of the seeker documents, basically part two and part three of the long-form EAF and a determination of environmental significance of the project. And then lastly is review and adoption, if you wish, of the approving resolution as well as wetland and erosion permits. Okay, so John's gonna talk to you about the bonds.
You should have a memo, and I apologize at the, for the late hour at which it was forwarded to you, but, um, we continued, we being Bruce Barber and the project engineer and myself continued working on these bonds. So, this project will require three bond amounts.
Okay.
Item number one is an erosion control bond. Item number two would be a stormwater management bond, and item number three would be a wetland mitigation bond. Um, item number one is a standard erosion control bond. It covers those matters associated with erosion and sediment control. Um, I have prepared a bond estimate. It's been reviewed by their engineer. He found it to be reasonable. Um, the recommendation in this case is fifteen thousand dollars. Um, the stormwater management bond, that covers all the various stormwater management and treatment methodologies to be employed by the project. Uh, we are recommending an amount, uh, an amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for that bond. Now, the interesting thing with the stormwater management bonds that, um, Bruce and I, uh, kinda considered is, once these things get built, there's no reason to continue to hold that bond for a, a two-year period. So, the way we have kinda crafted this one is, you would post the initial bond, once everything got built, certified, and was in operation, that bond amount would be reduced. And in this case, our recommend, recommended reduction would be down to ten thousand, and that covers long-term maintenance and, and other items associated with the bond. Unfortunately, it, it didn't make my memo, and I apologize, but I think it is covered in the resolution. And then the last one is the wetland mitigation bond, and, and this one's a rather simple one, but it's, it's, it's a necessary element. There's a minor wetland, uh, buffer disturbance. It needs to be revegetated, it needs to be revegetated properly. Uh, Bruce and the, um, engineer for the project sponsor have developed a, a simple planting plan, uh, that would redo, would do that. So, the amount there is seventeen hundred dollars. So, we would recommend that you accept these bonds and incorporate them in their specific, in their appropriate locations within the resolution, and, um, once the resolution is adopted, you, I would suggest that we probably would have the town planning board attorney prepare the specific bond forms, because these are a little complicated, and, um, then they would be referred to the town board when ready for acceptance.
Okay.
And then I'll let Bruce take it.
Okay, so any questions on the bonds at all? Okay. Second step is the, uh, seeker process. The applicant had submitted on behalf of the applicant's, uh, project, a part one of the long-form EAF, which this board has reviewed as, as the consultants, it's been amended several times, um, and from that, in the board's consideration, certain modifications were made to the plans. In light of that, it is the board's responsibility to develop a part two as well as a part three EAF as well, and also determine a, uh, environmental significance. In reviewing the project, um, basically the way that part two is set up is there are questions regarding whether a particular element of the project is considered a, a not or a small impact or a moderate to large impacts. Those elements that are considered moderate to large impacts have to be further explained or mitigated for the project to actually have a negative declaration. In this particular project, there were some, um, some impacts to land in terms of stormwater and potential erosion control. There was some potential impacts, again, for surface water conditions, some potential impacts in the flooding, uh, of the property, and basically, that was it. Small impacts to the wetlands as far as surface waters. So, those areas are identified by the applicant, and in so doing, the project was modified. Number one, uh, all of the development, uh, is on steep slopes that are less than fifteen percent. It's concentrated in the more flat areas of the site. The vast majority of the site is also located outside of the wetland and wetland buffer jurisdictional to the town as well as to the DEC. Um, a very small area of the wetland buffer, uh, has been encroached upon for the driveway expansion. That is where the planting, uh, mitigation is going in of the bond that you heard about earlier, John discussed. Uh, as far as the flood, uh, that was examined by the engineers. It's found that there are no substantive improvements that are gonna be going within the hundred and five-hundred-year floodplain, and there is no flood storage reduction as well as on the site due to the post-construction activities. Erosion sediment control, there is a erosion sediment control plan that's been developed by a licensed professional engineer, developed by John in accordance, reviewed by John in accordance with the New York State and DEC standards. And then stormwater management, there's post-construction stormwater practices so that post-construction, pollutant loading, and quantity and quality of stormwater will not be increased from pre-construction levels. That being said, that forms the part three, or how these moderate to large impacts identified in part two have been successfully mitigated, at least within the opinion of this board. And if that is indeed this board's opinion, then the next action you would be taking would be to vote to authorize the chairperson to execute the part three EAF, indicating that this board finds that there is no substantial negative environmental impact, and a long-form environmental assessment form will not be prepared for this action. Okay? Any questions on that? Okay, number three, we're getting there. Okay, number three is the resolution before you for this project. Basically, it's a draft resolution for, um, site plan approval, wetland, steep slope and erosion control. It also, as the board recall, you, uh, sent out intent for lead agency some time ago, not receiving any, uh, adverse opinions to the contrary. This board is also declaring through this resolution lead agency, as well as incorporating the part three AF in a determination of non-significance to the environment. There, this is a unlisted action under seeker. Um, there are, uh, impacts to the land disturbance on the site through stormwater management and erosion sediment control. Those will be mitigated. There are minor impacts to the wetland buffer areas. Uh, I wanna go through, through with you some of the conditions of the resolution, some of which, as we speak, have been addressed, some still remain to be, uh, taken care of. Basically, the conditions of approval are to satisfy all remaining comments from the professional engineer of the town, as well as myself, my office. Um, obtain approval for the stormwater management plan. Obtain approval from the Putnam County Department of Health for the well and septic system. Fire district regarding the road, which we have received since yesterday. Uh, highway superintendent, which we have received. Um, obtain any, uh, approvals regarding the DEP, which they are actually co, uh, reviewers with the, with the, uh, Putnam County Department of Health for the septic system. the stipulation of sediment, which you call way back when, is what started the ball rolling in this from the court proceedings and the adoption of the concept plan from this board several months ago. That needs to be filed in the county clerk's office. Then I wanna get to items number ten on page four of seven of the resolution, of which there's a blank there. This has to do with the performance security for the road septic control bond. That blank, or the Xs there should be indicated as fifteen thousand dollars. And I apologize for this being blank, but we just received this information today, so we're doing it on the fly here.
Yeah.
Number eleven, there are two blanks. The first one in sentence number three, a third down from the top, is seventy-five thousand dollars. And the one at the very last sentence of that number eleven item is ten thousand dollars.
Sorry, what? That was seventeen hundred?
Seventy-five thousand on the first blank.
Seventy-five thousand. Seventeen hundred on that, the third one.
Ten thousand on the second one.
Sorry, ten thousand. Sorry. Yeah, turned up seventy-five.
And then lastly, number twelve, which flows onto page five. Okay, that blank will be filled in with seventeen hundred, one thousand, seven hundred dollars. Okay, so basically, um, just let's summarize, and we're all good. Number eleven, the blank indicates fifteen thousand dollars. Number eleven, there are two blanks, the first being seventy-five thousand, the second being ten thousand. And number twelve, the blank should be indicated as seventeen hundred. We're all good?
Yep.
Okay, great. Also, the bond agreements that John alluded to, that the planning board's attorney's gonna be crafting, need to be, uh, completed.
Last one.
Stormwater management agreement for future maintenance will also be reviewed by the planning board attorney and John, uh, as well as the easement agreement. So, needs to be an easement to allow periodic inspections from the town to occur. Um, wetland mitigation landscaping bond will be returned to the end of its free period once the plants have been installed. Steep slope erosion control will be returned at the end of a two-year period once the plant starts to stabilize with at least eighty percent of permanent vegetation. Um, applicant is required to pay some inspection fees for steep slopes, and, um, really is basically it. We need certification that prior to the issuance of the final CO, that all stormwater management approvals have been installed in accordance with the approved plans. That will go to the building inspector and VIRA, um, and an as-built survey upon completion. So, that's really basically it. These, a lot of these are standard type of conditions. Uh, you'd be voting now, if you choose to do so, on this, number three, as an amended resolution to include those items that we filled in the blanks for. So, your first action tonight would be to go way back to number one and vote to accept the bonds and refer them to the town board.
Okay.
Need a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
I'll make the motion for the first one, which would be the erosion control, control permit, the control permit bond, which is for fifteen thousand.
Mm-hmm. Right.
I'll second that. How do we vote? Aye.
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 Good enough. All right, next one would be the
Stormwater Management Performance.
Stormwater Patrol Bond. That would be, first is the first one is seventy-five thousand and then ten thousand, correct?
Right. The total bond amount would be seventy-five thousand dollars upon issuance of the certificate of auction. It would be reduced to ten thousand dollars.
Okay. So, it'd be seventy-five thousand dollars to be reduced to ten thousand dollars to serve as a long-term maintenance guarantee. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Aye. How do we vote?
Aye.
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 And the last one would be the wetland mitigation for, the wetland mitigation bond for seventeen hundred. How do we vote? On auction. I'll make the motion.
Second.
How do we vote?
Aye.
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 Great, great. Okay, test number two is if you are comfortable with parts two and three of the long-form EAF, and you feel comfortable that in, so going through this process, that there are indeed, uh, no substantial negative environmental, uh, instances with this project, you can vote to authorize the chairperson to sign the part three document indicating as such.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
How do we vote?
Aye.
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 Good enough. Done.
Yep, very good. And lastly, uh, to vote for the amended resolution, as amended this evening, um, for the approval of the lead agency declaration, site plan, steep slope, wetland permit, negative declaration for this project.
I'll make the recommendation for the resolution would be lead agency. Who's gonna second?
Site plan.
And the site plan.
Steep slope, wetland, and negative declarations.
Yeah.
There you go. You got it.
I'll make the motion. Who's gonna second it?
Second.
Aye.
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 Passed.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Bob.
Here you go. Next time, we need more doctors.
Have a good night, Bob.
Do you have it? Do I have a copy? Yours, yours has it. I don't have it. I just did. You have it. All right. Next on, next on the board would be RuPauli Property?
Torres.
Oh, no, Brett. Oh, no, no. Torres.
No, that's going.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the Torres application was, uh, is on the agenda. We had hoped that the applicant, we submitted some new materials. We discussed that with him previously, but he has not done that. We spoke with him. He's pulling together a plan for soil testing, would have to submit to this board, and asked that it be counted for the next meeting. So, there is no, no discussion this evening.
All right, good enough. Next one would be RuPauli Property. Anybody here? Guess not. Guess there's another one.
The engineer is, is not here. Um, basically, this is a project for the construction of a new single-family residence on an existing lot of record, including a new driveway, a new individual well, and an onsite wastewater disposal system. Uh, Bruce and I did make a field observation visit out there, um, to observe the driveway location and discuss some of the options on the lots. The driveway location works. Um, the site is heavily wooded, and, and it has a lot of steep slopes. There is one issue with regards to an intermittent water course that Bruce and Mr. Lynch, the engineer, uh, need to resolve, but of course, given the weather conditions, um, it's not favorable for taking a trek through these woods. Um, uh, that will need to be addressed, um, but, um, you do have a memo, and, and quite honestly, um, there's really no major issues. We will need a superhighway superintendent's review. That was communicated to Mr. Lynch, and he was planning on reaching out to Mr. Rothmer. And again, given the snow cover, it doesn't make much sense to do that, so, uh, but in the meantime, Paul is developing the plans, and, um, right now, what we have is relatively simple and straightforward. Um, he needs to dot some i's and cross some t's and, and bring some, um, additional information forward, but there are no waivers required, and there's no action for you to take this evening.
Okay.
And just to add to the water course, this is a water course which was actually found to be jurisdictional to DEP, um, and so they are requiring that the septic system be held back two hundred feet from the water course edge. Um, it also seems to traverse through the back of many properties. Perhaps this was purposely done when the, uh, Perhaps this was purposely done when the subdivision was laid out and houses were constructed to allow drainage to work its way through, as oftentimes is the case. But there's no easements that's shown on the, on the survey or anything at all to document that. So we're going to head out and have a look at it to determine, number one, if it is a town of Kent jurisdictional water course, in which case then it would have a 100-foot buffer associated with it. But also, if there's a need for this board to maybe consider some type of easement so that somebody who purchases the property and wants maybe a little more of a level backyard, for example, would fill that in and create upstream issues for people that it's now blocked, et cetera. So something to think about down the road, not too complicated, but just a little glitch in this particular property. So we'll have a look at that when the weather's a little bit more favorable and let you know what we find out.
All right, next one would be Kent self-storage number two.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph Reena, Principal of Site Design Consultants. We're here tonight for a time extension, moving towards final site plan approval. The last time we were formally before you, you granted a time extension. During that period since, we have been working to address comments that were received by the town's fire and safety consultant and working with the fire department and addressing their comments and concerns, which are represented on the, on the site plan, which I showed you at the work session. Most notably, they wanted a second access for, to Luddington Court and extension of a fire hydrant off the main driveway so they can have direct access to it. So, you know, at this point, we're anxious now, under the new ownership of the property, to move to getting final site plan approval. We are working on transitioning the current health department and DOT permits to, under the new ownership. And I'm ready to answer any questions. I, at the last time extension, the board considered and waived the requirement of a public hearing, and we're hoping that we consider that for, for this final approval.
Okay, good evening, folks. You do have a memo from me. As Joe said, this was, this was approved once before and went all the way through the process. I don't, but I thought Vera had gotten it to you. I can get you one. Where was I? It was granted back in May of 2022. At that time, the project was for two self-storage buildings along with parking wastewater treatment, stormwater treatment, the whole nine yards. They had advanced almost all the way through the process. There was a couple things left to be resolved. They have now amended their application. That application is for a single three-story self-storage building with parking retaining walls, water, stormwater. The current project eliminates one building and reduces the site disturbance. It kind of compresses things. The proposal was further amended to address fire district concerns, as Joe said, related to the site changes associated with the consolidation of the self-storage facility into one three-story structure. Just to kind of, I won't go through them all, but there's a lot of i's to dot and t's to cross. They did have coverage on the speedy stormwater permit. There's been some modifications. I don't think there is any substantive changes to stormwater management. They will need to demonstrate that the current permit is in full force and effect and will need to complete the change in ownership process. There's some forms you have to fill. There's some notifications you have to make to change ownership. That will need to be done. We defer to Bruce regarding wetland issues. Putnam County Health Department approval was previously obtained. And they did get an extension, but I think they need another extension because I think their extensions are time-challenged. They're only for a given period of time. They did have a New York State DOT permit. Again, conditions haven't changed. The permit was extended. It probably needs to be extended again, so we would need to see proof of that. We had gone as far as providing, preparing the stormwater maintenance and access agreements. Draft forms were ready, but they're in the name of the previous owner. I have reached out to the planning board attorney. They're in the process of updating those forms, and they expect to have some updated forms to us, perhaps as early as tomorrow. There were some recommended erosion control bond estimate of $34,414 and a stormwater management facilities bond estimate of $48,740. These bond amounts were previously accepted by this board. I don't see any real substantive changes to them, so it's merely a question of completing the bond process now. And again, that's in the hands of the town. Planning board attorney, they were almost complete last time under the previous ownership, so they're being revised to cover the new ownership. Couple minor plan changes. The proposed water storage tank is not consistently shown on all sheets. There's an access road back to that tank that's, that's also not really clear. We understand that the intent is to build these tanks into the slope so that they're kind of like screened from the upper elevations, which I gather was a concern on the earlier project. The grading plan needs some clarification and perhaps some notes just to clarify the designer's intent in that regard. The fire district requested an emergency access drive to connect the site to Luddington Court. The emergency access is shown on the plans. It's graded. We don't have a profile. As we discussed at the workshop, it's going to need a normally closed and locked gate to be equipped with a Knox box that will be coordinated with the fire district. And there's some issues with the landscaping plan. But in reviewing my notes, what we really need is we're going to need a formal sign-off from the fire district because it is a non-standard driveway. In other words, it doesn't meet our standards. But they wanted it, and they acknowledged that. They said, hey, we just need that second access in there. And yeah, we can, we can run it up even though I think it's about 17% at its max, if I recall properly. All in all, the matter of a public hearing, my understanding is, looking through the record, that there was a public hearing on the original approval because we were kind of waiting for this approval to be perfected a little bit, this application, which it now is. I think the consensus was that you might want to have another public hearing. There's some debate. I think there's sufficient information. Unless there's some glitches between now and the next meeting, you may want to consider scheduling that public hearing sooner rather than later because if there are issues, Joe's going to need to build them into the plan. But I, I think there's enough for everyone to look at. There is a rough-looking cross-section that does show the tank, so that people living up to the backside of this should be able to get a sense. And I think in the bottom line is, they're going to see less of the tank in the building on this application, even though it's three stories because they're kind of keeping that back, kind of closed in, than they were under the original. But I defer to you. It's up to you, folks.
It's two quick things. First of all, I did not prepare a memo on this project this evening. Just waiting for the revised plan materials to come in, and we'll do that then. And certainly want to take a look at the screening that the applicant has proposed for the tank that would, is an issue for adjoining residential properties. I concur with John. The board may want to consider because there had been discussion about the visual, potential visual impacts of the property in the past. You may wish to look at a public hearing. But again, the property does seem to be, you know, advanced enough that you might want to consider that for the next February meeting. One thing that came up that Bill Walters brought up, that's an excellent question that we're going to be getting a lot of now in the next month or two, is can the trees be cut down on the property now? And the board will recall that there are tree-cutting restrictions due to the potential presence of certain bat species that are both overseen by the DEC at a state level, but also overseen on a federal level through U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So basically, the applicant, I believe, has contacted DEC, and fortuitously, there are no bat, or phusium, or hyberniculums within 2.5 miles of the site. And I think you have an all-clear from DEC, Joe? Okay, which is great. But the other thing that's unfortunate is that the federal government identified the entire county of Putnam as a U.S., as a bat recovery zone, meaning that they have imposed restrictions of either tree-cutting and/or testing and examining at a site for the presence of bats. And so generally, the board has not looked at allowing tree-cutting to happen until either, number one, there was a variance from U.S. Fish and Wildlife; number two, there was a professional study indicating the absence of the bats; or number three, the trees were going to be cut down prior to March 31st, which is difficult because we have a public hearing in February and maybe some conditions of approval and what have you, but not necessarily impossible to get done. So I just want to make the board aware, you're going to be seeing this tree-cutting issue between now and the end of March, I think, on several occasions because it puts people up against a very, very tight timeline by not allowing trees to be cut between April 1st and October 31st. So Joe, do you have any thoughts or comments on that?
No. We, we presented this, we discussed this, presented this during the approval of the, the current standing approval. And, and it's actually noted on the plan that it would be permitted to cut trees during that time period since it, since we have from the DEC something saying that we are not within a, within a zone that, that the bats would roost. So there is, there is a note on our plan, which is carried through that approval from the last time. You know, I, I think we kind of vetted that issue out the last time through.
I think, I think what's happened too is that the recovery bats' criteria have changed, actually, it's changed several times. So I think the best thing to do is take a look at it. This is a tremendous hardship for people who want to build something. And so the idea behind it is that we don't want people to go down the road of non-compliance, but certainly, this is a difficult process. Most people in this area of the world build during the summer months when it's warmer. So I'll take a look at what the current regulations are from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, get back, talk with Joe offline, see what we have, and we'll get back to this board and make a recommendation. Okay?
Good enough. That's it.
Just if you consider, if we're all the rest holding a public hearing at this meeting?
Yeah. All right, good enough. I'll make the motion to have a, hold a public hearing.
I'll second that.
How do we vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Good enough.
Thanks very much.
Have fun.
Good night.
Have a good night. Trail Club, Gypsy Trail Club.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Cooper. I'm a partner with the law firm of Zaren and Steinmetz here, representing the applicant, the Trail Club, who is the contract vendor to purchase or acquire back a portion of 769 Gypsy Trail Road. We are here on the review of a proposed five-lot subdivision application on what is a currently a 64.8 acre property. With me from the Trail Club is Michael Harp and Denny Dennison in the audience, as well as Michael Bodendorf, the project engineer, who's behind me and will probably be up here for most of this, this matter. As you may recall, the, when we were last before you, the Trail Club, the idea here is to create three additional lots for club members to build homes, preserve a 48-acre parcel, a portion of the parcel is not developed, and then preserve a 6.5 acre lot around the existing home and accessory uses on the property, which is the, the actual property owner's home at this point. We're here tonight to essentially discuss the completion or whether or not the, the application itself is complete to move forward in the subdivision application process or review process. At the last meeting, you will recall, the question was really focused on lots four and five, which are the two what I'll call stacked lots on the property. There was a discussion mostly focused with respect to fire access as well as compliance with zoning compliance, but really sort of your environmental constraint regulations. The applicant's engineer, and Michael will take you through this, has met with staff and discussed both of those issues. The applicant has met with your staff and relevant decision-makers in the, in the town. And we believe we have a path forward. So what we want to do tonight is, with the board's, what it allow us to, is to take us through, take you through where we believe we can, we can address both of those issues. What we hope to do tonight or walk away with from tonight is, because this is a pre-application meeting essentially, guidance from the, from the board as to whether or not this approach is, you're comfortable with it and you think, as your regulations put it, would be an appropriate layout. Because what we don't want to do is spin wheels, both your wheels and our wheels, about these two lots. So we really do want to dig into that issue tonight. So with that, let me turn it over to Michael to take you through how we believe we can answer these questions, and then I'll come back to you with some, answer any questions you have.
Thank you, David. Good evening, for the record. Mike Bodendorf, engineer for the project. At the last meeting, we had some takeaways from board comments and consultant comments with regard to fire storage, fire access, emergency pull-offs, rectangles on the lot. So I'll just go through those briefly of how we amended the plan in those respects. There's an existing wetland on the site that doesn't meet the town requirements for regulation, but it is indeed a wetland. And we've identified it as a possibility. And we did meet out there with Mr. Walters to, to look at this area as a possibility to excavate this wetland larger to provide more storage, which would serve as fire storage. That wetland is on lot one, shown here on the plan. The grading shown on the plan provides well over 30,000 gallons of storage. That was the target volume that we were asked to provide. We provided a pull-off on lot two at 300 feet into the lot, and it's shown on the plan now. We also demonstrated that a fire truck can navigate the shared driveway of lot five. I'll just turn to that page. The fire truck on the plan here is a 40-foot and 3/4 fire apparatus. It's, it's not necessarily one of the town's fire trucks, but it's one we have in our database, and it's larger than the 38-foot truck that we've been told that the town has. So we're confident that the town truck will also meet those requirements, and we will provide that on the plan when we get the dimensions and the turning criteria of the truck. We're asking for the board to consider permitting the turnaround or pull-off, emergency pull-off, to be located at 450 feet into the lot. And that's where the house is located, and that's where the truck can turn around. We feel that's the best area for it. It's only 150 feet more than the 300 feet that you were requesting and what's noted in your code. So we're asking the board to consider that. And finally, the 10,000-square-foot rectangles on four and five. I just have to flip the pages here. So there, there is a small amount of slopes that are in excess of 15% or more within those rectangles. We have advanced the plans, though, showing that we did soil tests in those locations and that we were confident that we can get septic systems in those rectangles despite the fact that there is a small amount of steep slopes in those locations. And just for comparison purposes, and I know this is other municipalities, but most municipalities define steep slopes as usually at 20% or more, sometimes 15% or more. But they'll disclude or exclude slopes that don't have contiguous... or exclude slopes that don't have contiguous area of 2,000 square feet or 50 feet in length or so. This town defines steep slopes as 15% or more, and that's it. So you could have a small area the size of this table, and it qualifies as a 15% slope. That's sort of what's in these rectangles, and we're just asking for the board to consider waiving that requirement. We do have to go through the health department. They will review these septic systems. They will review the soil tests, will redo them with them. So we're confident we can get a design in there that will work with these houses. So we're just asking for your consideration on that.
I've got two questions for you.
Sure.
You said the turnaround for the fire truck is where?
It's a...
Is it at the first house on...
Is that lot five? What house is it?
At the driveway?
In the driveway, the parking area.
Right. That parking area is quite large. We could designate a portion of it to be left open for the fire truck.
Second is, you say two rectangles, but the second one is not a rectangle. The one that you have here, the 10,000 square foot buildable area rectangle, looks like it's a parallelogram, more than a rectangle.
I spoke with Bruce Barber. He recommended that I could use a trapezoid in that case.
Okay. So far, that's something to add right now.
Regarding the driveway, I believe there, the slope varies between 12 and 15%, right?
Yes.
And the, I guess, we normally require no more than 10%.
Correct.
So you'd be asking a waiver.
Yeah, we are asking for a waiver for that.
And what's the approximate length of the driveway from bottom to top? Looks like about 700 feet?
Yeah.
So to me, that's concerning. I mean, to me, it seems overly steep. When we issue waivers, usually there might be a small portion of a driveway that exceeds it, and we find no significant impact. To me, this actually looks a little scary. You know, if I'm a homeowner, you know, maybe leaving home and early in the morning and some black ice, and who's to keep a car from just slipping off the driveway going down the hill? So...
My car's done that.
Pardon?
My car has done that.
Yeah, so I remain concerned about the slope and exceeding our 10% requirement.
Will there be a limit to the size of the houses?
A limit to?
The size of that actual house?
Um...
Some kind of control, so...
Is there a concern to the size of the houses?
Well, I'm thinking about it. If you put some big, something large up there, and you have this, everything's a compromise coming up the driveway, there's added traffic, added so on and so forth. You have slopes on your, on your septic areas. Again, you know, the larger the house, the more use, the more activity there.
Right. I mean, these are typically seasonal houses?
You can't do that because seasonals are non-seasonal.
Right.
Especially with this, you know, the last few years.
I can ask the applicant if they would consider limiting the size of the house? Do you want to jump in here?
So the intent is for these to be, homes for the, for the club owners or for, you know, club members. Typically, they won't be McMansions or large houses with many bedrooms and many, many cars coming through. But we can certainly work with the, with the club to incorporate in its bylaws certain limits on the size of the house. As you look at the subdivision themselves, the house is limited by the constraints on the site already. So you're not, you're not looking at, you're not creating lots that are going to be huge homes just by virtue of the size, of where they're located. But if there was a, what I'll say, when I say legitimate, I mean, a concern that's connected to an actual identified impact that the planning board has, then we can work with the, with the club to put in its bylaws some sort of control so that it's not, that impact does not occur.
Also, I think when we were talking before about this, we were suggesting for, let me get the lot number right, lot four, is there a way of bringing the driveway around the back of lots one and three? Oh, sorry, lot two and three. If we could take it on the back, but instead of, then we try and keep them, the driveway to...
An alternate driveway location through lot three?
No, behind, because obviously you can't come through lot three because that's the main residence, which, but between, behind lot three and lot two, if it's possible, I don't know. I'm just saying, it's just because it would solve one of your problems.
Yeah. The agreement that we have with Mr. Ayers, who's the current owner of the property, the agreement that we have, the club has, with Mr. Ayers, who's the owner of the property, is that we're not allowed to bring any driveway across his backyard. And that was one of the things we agreed to, hence the access to...
Even with, no matter how much screening you can put?
Well, he views that as his backyard. Everything, everything uphill from his backyard is undevelopable, is we're not allowed to do anything up there. As much as we would like to, it's, it's, it's one of the things he stipulated when he granted us the right to repurchase the land. And on the, on the previous question on the size, I mean, the size of the house will be limited by the septic. So it's going to be, it's going to be a three or four-bedroom house. There's not that much room to put the house there, and it's going to be consistent with Trail Club, as you know, limitations. I mean, there's, the culture of the club is to have Adirondack-style housing. So I don't know if there's a square footage limit, but it's certainly going to be limited by bedrooms in terms of the septic system. And, you know, it'll be consistent with what you see at the rest of the club, if that's, if that's of any help.
And just to piggyback on Michael's comment about the driveway, there is quite a large section of very steep slopes in this area where we would have to bypass it on this 200-foot lot. It's just...
So you can't... You can't push the key?
Sure. So you can see on lot three, on the, on the, I guess, the south side of lot three, there's a, there's a large portion of steep slopes that we would have to navigate to get a driveway up there. It's going to be much more impactful than the driveway that we're proposing now.
Another question I have regarding lot two. It looks like you also have a driveway slope greater than 10% for a portion of...
I can bring that one to 10%. That was just matching the grade as best possible, but I can...
Looks like you can swing it wider.
Yeah, I'll absolutely bring that back down to 10%.
Okay, so the last time we had an opportunity to speak with the board about this was early November. We subsequently had additional material submitted by the applicant. I also had a discussion with the applicant's engineer, Mike Bodendorf, regarding the rectangles, which we'll discuss in just a second. But very briefly, a couple of things. First of all, with respect to zoning, regardless of how this application moves forward, if indeed the board decides to move forward with this particular design, then there will be a need to refer this eventually to the town board for open development approval. The back lot does not have any rote frontage to itself, it's owned by that property, and so that would be an additional step that the board would have to consider doing as part of this process. In addition, with SEAKER, we really don't have a perfected application yet to send out for a coordinated review to the involved agencies. Until such time is really the determination's made and what is this going to look like in terms of the lot count and the configuration. Most of the, or the remaining elements are pretty much well in order, but that's certainly something that needs to be, needs to be addressed. With regards to the wetlands, Mike and I had a discussion, and basically the wetlands on site are small kind of pocket wetland. They are less than 40,000 square feet in size, which is a jurisdictional size to regulate wetlands in the town of Kent. They are not regulated by the DEC or the federal government. And so there is an opportunity, and Mike has utilized that, to actually expand those wetlands and create a fire suppression system which is appropriate and does not need a wetland permit by this board. With respect to trees, the code is somewhat specific and somewhat not regarding what the plan should show as far as trees. It indicates that all trees of 24 inches DBH or greater must be shown on the plans. However, it also talks about areas of wooded locations and clumps of trees. So we would like the applicant to at least fill in some information regarding some substantial areas of trees that might need to be cut as part of this application. The amount of disturbance was changed modestly from the original submittal of 2.9 acres up to 3.54 acres now, I suspect due to driveway changes. There are going to be some information required on the driveway if going forward with this regarding future easements, maintenance requirements and things like that. And then we get to the rectangles. So the town code, as you know, requires a 10,000-foot rectangle of which no environmentally sensitive land shall be included, but only improvements of septic systems and expansion of septic systems shall be included. When I did speak with Mike, we basically talked about two options, one of which there would be a standard-sized rectangle, which would have some steep slope areas in it that the board would consider perhaps providing a variance to that zoning regulation, as is your right. Or we talked about creating a non- or an irregular-shaped polygon or trapezoid, if you will, so that you would be able to perhaps include those areas without any steep slopes, without any wetlands. And suggested both plans be submitted to this board for your consideration. I suspect Mike just felt it was more appropriate to do the one with the variance with the steep slopes and the 10,000-square-foot rectangles. So that's before your consideration this evening. The board, to my knowledge, has not been asked to consider a waiver for that particular requirement before regarding environmentally sensitive lands within a 10,000-foot rectangle and a potential build of a lot in this subdivision. I have, I went back in my records, I don't have any history of any, any application that has had that in the past. Other than that, we have some questions about the open space parcel, the large parcel that's going to be remaining. Is that going to be remaining as open space in perpetuity? Is there something going to be planned for that in terms of development, et cetera? There are substantial areas of steep slopes and rock out there, as we all know. The applicant has alluded to the fact that they don't anticipate blasting, but what the board has seen is a lot of non-anticipation blasting and then blasting happening when the construction starts. So the board has started, and this is, would not be the first time, to actually document from the applicant certain borings where the foundation's going to be, if there'll be basements in the property, to ensure that blasting will not occur rather than just not anticipate blasting will occur. Blasting can be extremely disruptive to the environment and to the residents, and that's happened in the past. Other than that, that's where we are right now. So I think that, again, as the applicant has indicated, it's central right now, I think, to move this application along, to make some type of determination with respect to the configuration and also the variances that have been requested for driveway slope, pull-off, and also the environmentally sensitive rectangles. Okay? Have any questions? John?
I'm not going to revisit old ground, but you do have a memo from me. With all due respect to Mike, he did as much as he could do, addressing as much as he could address, because everything hinges, as everyone says, on a determination with respect to the viability of lots four and five. To truly advance this, you need to make a determination on, on both the rectangles and those lots. I think they've had discussions with the fire district. I think the fire district has indicated that they could live with this. I would like to make sure that it's entered into writing and in your record, if that being the case. We have not yet heard back, I don't believe, from Mr. Othmer, the highway superintendent, which is another requirement for waiver of driveway grades. And just to revisit Tom's point, we have never waived what is virtually an entire driveway. Typically, we waive sections of the driveways, and a lot of applicants have gone quite a distance to make sure that they've limited those sections, because there are pavement requirements, there are other things, they increase stormwater, there's, there's a whole bunch of issues. So to be quite blunt, I have no dog in this fight. Engineering-wise, we can make things work on paper. We can also make them work in the field. But the determination is, the town code is quite specific, and the ability to grant a waiver lies with you folks. And unless and until that action occurs, this doesn't move forward.
One question. But we do need the approvals of the fire department and also the highway superintendent, correct?
The way your code is worded, you do need input from both, both...
Both gentlemen.
Both entities. And we have verbally, and Mr. Walters will confer, that the fire district, I think they, they saw the water source and said, yeah, we'll trade you the water source for the driveway.
But we still need it in writing.
We still need it in writing, and we do need the highway superintendent to write, weigh in in writing as well.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, the issue there is, with respect to the waiver, right, we have to go through the process for you to actually vote on the waiver, because you have, you would have to complete the SEAKER process. So, so I think that the question tonight is, are we going, are we actually going, we have already had the meetings, but are we actually going to pursue written approvals from the fire department, from highway department for these, for these lots? But, but in order to do that, as I said before, we don't want to spin wheels if the board ultimately is saying, look, it's great you've got those letters, but at the end of the day, in our discretion, we're still going to say, we don't, we don't want this. So what we're looking for the board to do tonight, which, which your regulations envision this, right, as a pre-application meeting, we're supposed to be finding an agreement on the appropriateness of the layout. That's really what we're looking for, for your guidance tonight, before we really put pen to paper and go full force on, on that design that you're looking at.
Okay. I mean, to my knowledge, as what the gentlemen are saying right here, our consultants, is that we're awaiting approval, written approval, until such. I mean, I do believe we are moving forward, but we have to wait to such time.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna weigh in a little bit, and I don't normally take the same side as attorneys.
Okay.
But, because I'm, because I'm a hardened engineer. But in all due respect, what it is, is basically, this is almost a two-step dance.
Hmm.
And step number one, logic and common sense, are you even in favor of this? It's a stacked lot. The front yard of one house is the backyard of the other, so on and so forth. So if you are willing to consider this layout, then to move to the next step and get it in writing would be the second, the appropriate second step. But I think, unfortunately, the mess lies squarely in your lap to decide whether you want this, whether you can live with this configuration or you can't. And if you can, then you go to the next steps. If you can't, they go ahead, they go away, and they retool their application and see what else they can finagle. But the, the, really, the first step is, if you folks aren't going to entertain it at the end of the day, you're better off saying it now rather than later.
John, but you also said at the workshop, if we did a wa, I mean, they would still have to have a waiver, right? So if we did a waiver, that's setting a precedent.
Well, if, down the road, as I said, we have never granted waivers that I can find, and I think Bruce looked as well, for entire driveways. I have, I have sections where you, you do have waivers, because we have a lot of steep slopes in this town. And, and we typically, you know, usually it's the first 30 feet, or it's a middle 30 feet, or it's, it's somewhere in between. This is a big waiver. So yes, if you granted it, it would be, it could potentially be considered a precedent, because never have we had a driveway the whole length.
And if it was denied, would the project go away then? Or are you going to re...
They'd probably retool it. I won't speak for them. I don't think projects ever go away.
Yeah.
I think he went to lost, he's just not telling you. The, so on the question of the precedent, if we're going to move forward on this, obviously it would be our, it'd be our burden to show you why this is so unique that it wouldn't create a precedent for other applicants. And, and that's partly, partly my job, that'd be partly Michael's job. But before we put pen to paper, again, it really is, it isn't in your lap, and I apologize for putting that in your lap so early. But if at the end of the day, the board is saying, look, doesn't matter, we just don't, let us then go back and retool and, and come back to it with another layout, if you think... If you think, look, if you get all the waivers, or if you, if you get all the approvals from the other, from the agencies and from fire and from, from DOT, I was going to DOT, but from the highway, excuse me, as well as prove out to us that, that this will not create a precedent, then we'll, we'll be okay with it, then we'll keep, we'll continue to move forward.
Well, this is like the first applicant, too, where their driveway was just going from 12-foot to 10-foot, and they gave us four reasons why it couldn't comply.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We haven't heard any of that.
That isn't the code for the driveways.
Right, I know. And, and, and we would, we would provide all that to you, but, but before that, before, if at the end of the day, this board is going to say, look, doesn't matter, we, why go through, why go through that, that exercise? It's really, we're standing here as sort of practical applicants, you know, which you don't often see, is to say, look, let's, let's have a rational discussion now, because even before we get to that, that burden or that, that analysis, you know, your, your regulations say, at a pre-application meeting, the applicant and, and the board should come to some sort of an agreement. It's not binding. Your, your regulations even say it's not binding. But, it's not binding, but should come to some agreement that, look, this concept is, is acceptable to move forward on.
So, so my point here, which I'm going to reiterate sort of what I said, or you at least you understand what I said, if it came to a vote, I, I would vote not to grant the waiver, just letting you know, and I think that's what you want to know, right?
On the steepness of the driveway?
I, I just for one, so.
On the steepness of the driveway or?
Correct, the driveway, yeah, yes.
Kathy, just so to reiterate your thoughts from the workshop, what we talked about with respect to the waivers, and considering waivers in general, not just this, is number one, putting those four steps aside that we discussed earlier, number one, is, is there an actual hardship that's created by not granting the waiver? What is the reason that the board should consider granting this waiver? Is there a hardship that is incurred by the applicant that's unanticipated, that they can't control, that is creating something that is, something that, that they can't work with? That's number one. Number two, which is just alluded to, is, and so granting that waiver sets a precedent. We have a long line around the building after this, that everybody now wants to have environmentally sensitive lands within their 10,000 square feet, or driveways steeper than 15%. And what's so unique about this particular project that, that there will not be a precedent created? What are the extenuating and unique circumstances behind this project that say, no, this is so special and so different that we won't have a, a plethora of other applications that you have to consider with this? Okay? Those are, those are basically what we talked about on Thursday last week.
Thank you.
You, too.
I'm, I'm just going to reiterate, and I, I, again, I, you have the ability to say yea or nay on any layout that comes to you. It, if you look at a layout and it makes sense, it has value, it's warranted, it, it is consistent with the code and advances the project, you say, yes, go ahead. If it has issues, are those issues surmountable? That then becomes the burden of the applicant going forward. I mean, but in simple point of fact, I think this one is so interestingly unique that you nearly need to make the decision upfront, because to, to have them throw good engineering, where at the end of the day, you're going to say, hey, guys, I should have said no to begin with, I don't think that's in anybody's best interest, and I'm, I'm just being candid.
Okay. So if I was to say right now, personally, I wouldn't grant the waiver. So, not right now.
So I guess if I was sitting in the applicant's shoes, and I was in the practice of reading tea leaves, I, I, I think, I think the answer's clear.
Yeah.
Mathematically, no.
But.
Several wild cards.
Right. So you're saying there's a chance? No. It's getting late, I apologize. But, look, if, if other members of the board would, 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 would give us their, their opinion, that would be great, you know.
Write that, write that on the line.
Yeah. As we call it, a straw vote, you know, that's not binding, but it's just, you know.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion for a vote.
There's no motion, he's going to give his opinion.
No, just, right, just a straw, straw vote.
Just an opinion. This is not a, this is not a binding vote.
Yeah.
I'd say like that.
And we'll, we'll even concede to that, it's just.
No, I'm just saying, it's going to be in the minutes. Are we going to?
Poll of the vote.
Yeah, a poll.
Yeah.
Which you never do.
What's this voting now?
Nay.
On the waivers.
No, I, I think he wants an opinion, why?
No, he just wants, first of all, if you want to grant the waiver, if you're possibly going to grant the waiver.
First of all.
And whether it's driveway or septic or both.
I think it's more complicated than that, though, because in my opinion, I, I'm not completely against the first lot. The back lot, I would say no.
Right now, it's, it's there.
Right, so right now, it would be no. I mean, there's a couple of issues there. The septic, I think, is we could work around the, the parallel around, whatever shape that is, is, we could work around that, but the back lot, I think, is just too much. So to grant the waiver for both of those issues, I would say no.
And I would say no.
I would say no also because of what he brought up in regards to the driveway. The driveway, anything, anytime there's a safety issue, yeah, that's kind of tough to give a waiver when you have a safety issue involved, especially with the weather, way the weather is up here, and black ice is pretty bad.
So, yeah, I remain at not granting the waiver for the driveway. To me, it would be less of a concern of, of the precedent. More concern is about safety to the homeowners. I think we as a town would be doing a disservice to any homeowner who buys one of these. Then, you know, what you have on paper, you know, technically might work, I think, in practical, in a practical sense. In the long term, it won't, there's, there's too many things that can go wrong. You know, we have erosion control measures that go into place. Are they going to be maintained? Is it going to start, you know, the driveway going to start washing away? There's just, to me, too many things that, it's, it's nature, you know, you're just, you're just trying to fight nature. Look what they do in California, right? And now we have buildings falling, you know, off of cliffs. So I'm not saying we're there yet, but it's just, it's just too much. I mean, it's not Hollywood Hills, but I, I just think it's too much. And it's, it's more about the, the practical sense of having driveways as such than, than any of the other matters.
And I think we discussed it at length at the workshop, you know, amongst us, and I think we all kind of came to the conclusion, what everybody's just saying. And again, I don't have a big driveway, and I've had two cars slide down the driveway in the winter. So, I mean, I've witnessed it, so I could just imagine what could happen here.
Just for the record, state your name, please.
I'm Michael Harp, I'm a club member. It's really helpful to hear the feedback, so thank you for, for being clear on that. If we go back to the drawing board and combine those two lots so that they're not stacked, and it's one, it's one building lot, so the rectangles issue, we can, you know, that eases the constraints on the rectangles and so forth, the, the driveway steepness, we're going to have, you know, we'll have to see, because even because of one lot, it is a steep, a steep hill, so we'll have to do the best we can on that. But I, I know some people, you commented on the, the two locks being stacked, with the one, you know, the one, the 48A process. It was just too much. So if we went back and eliminated one of those and just had one building lot there.
It's your time of money. If you want to explore it, I mean, we're happy to see it. I mean, I'd love to see you make it work.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not against the point of development, we're not at all.
Yeah.
We just have certain concerns, that's it. So. Anything else? No more commentaries?
All right, well, thank you very much, we appreciate that. Not, not many boards would, would do that upfront, so we appreciate that.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
AJ Realty.
AJ Realty. I think this one is, and this one? Oh, the sign.
The diminishes. Okay, yeah.
Okay. I do hope this is an easy one for you now.
Hope so.
This is an application for a sign installation at 486 Route 52. The owner of the property is AJ First Realty. The sign is on the behalf of a business called 5210 Nail Spa. And basically, it is a side-mounted or building-mounted sign. The application and the sketches that you're looking at show it to be five foot by five feet, but in accordance with discussions with the building inspector and the applicant, the actual size will be four foot by four foot, which is underneath the 20-square-foot threshold required in the code. Mr. Walters also indicated that this is to replace what was a pre-existing non-conforming sign. So it's a smaller sign, but in basically the same location as the sign was there formerly. There is only a few things that I'd like to draw the board's attention, those are on page two. And this particular sign is going to be illuminated, all right? And really, the code is very clear on illuminated signs. It says, sign shall, the, the plans are either should be amended to indicate the sign shall not be illuminated by or contain flashing, intermittent, rotating, or moving lights, except as shown as time, date, or temperature. Also, paraphrasing, the sign shall not have direct glare beyond the property borders. And in addition, as I said, the sign size should be amended to show on the plans and the application of a four foot by four foot sign, not a five foot by five foot. Other than that, this sign, uh, application meets all diminishes requirements, and it's recommended with those conditions changed, that the board recommend that the building inspector grant a building permit for the application. Any questions?
So it is illuminated, okay.
It's just LED light or something like that, right?
Exactly.
We're going to, yeah, it's good.
Okay, just vote, if you're just regular vote.
No fireworks?
I, I believe so, yes.
Yeah?
Yes, it would be a lot of, yeah.
Awesome.
Group's mouth.
Pretty cool.
And this is internally illuminated, right, from inside?
Yes, correct, inside.
Okay.
All right, just a simple vote will be fine.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I'll make that vote in regards to the sign for AJ Realty. Does John, do you have anything to say in regards to it?
No, uh, signs, signs are Mr. Walters to speak.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion, I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Aye.
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 Passes, there you go. All right, next. Guy, Guy, oh, Gaienzaga? Gaienzaga, Mayette, 28 Soul Drive. Above the, the line, wow.
So this project is known two ways here in the town, it's called 24 Soul Drive or Gaienzaga. The folks are here.
Oh, they're here.
Nice to finally meet you.
Good evening.
If you could just introduce yourselves.
Hi, my name is Jemba Gaienzaga. Actually, I heard the architect was supposed to come today, but in the last minute, he said he cannot come, so he sent me to bring the plan while we're trying to relocate the driveway. It was in a different area, and now we're pulling like the other side. So very much he drove this plan and, and sent me with a set of plans.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
So I do have a memo, and I did include photographs.
Yeah.
So we've had some comments. To be blunt, I don't think the architect understands the comments, and I don't think he's properly set about addressing them. My recommendation to, to the applicant would be to find an engineer, because as an engineer, I usually start five foot outside the structure, and I would prefer that architects stay inside the structure, because when they come outside, they typically have issues. So we have a memo, and the conditions need to be addressed. They need to be addressed by a professional who understands what those are, and I, I think it's incumbent upon the, and I would recommend that you find an engineer to assist your architect and get the site back into control. And, you know, we can provide you with our memo, and unfortunately, we can't recommend anybody, but if you talk to Mr. Walters, he's probably got a list of engineers that you might want to talk to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Sorry about that.
Sorry. All right. I'll make the approval for the minutes, I'll make the motion regarding the approval of minutes for December. A little second motion?
A little second.
Let's make, well.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now we're under the line? Below the line? Yeah, I think so.
Isn't that M O and the G?
Originally.
Yeah.
Folks, folks back there. You waiting for somebody?
Oh, okay.
Oh, guys.
They should be allowed to.
Do you want to come out?
Yeah, you want to come up and speak, you can. You can, it's okay. It's a public hearing, just come in and introduce yourselves. That's all you need to do.
My name's Teresa Morris. We've lived in, in that home since 1969, and when that stuff happened last year, they just came in and started taking trees down, everything down, switched the driveway, the driveway is on this side of the house, now it's on this side across to us, which is dangerous coming down that hill. There, there's no line of sight to see the driveway. When it, it rains, it was like a waterfall coming down onto our property, because they took down all the trees. They put the addition on, I don't even know how they did that. I thought you had to notify neighbors or anything when you make an addition, how they even did that. I don't know if they got, we, we didn't think anything, because we thought people go through the right channels and get permits and do what you're supposed to do the right way. I don't know if they did. I don't even know how it was allowed, but we thought they did everything the right way, so we didn't question it, thinking that you guys approved everything that they were doing.
No.
I don't know what these people do. I don't, I mean, I don't know how they got away with it, or if you guys did approve everything.
Uh, one thing.
That's why we came today.
The, the building inspector put a work order code in regards to that.
So the, the simple answer is, they, they didn't do it the right way. They received a stop work order. They were granted some relief from that stop work order to kind of repair things and minimize damage, and I think they went even beyond that. And so the reason that they are in front of us is they've got to get everything back in order and legalized. The gentleman that they have trying to do that is an architect who has been unable to address our concerns, my concerns, the environmental consultant's concerns, and the building inspector's concerns. So we're trying to get them on the right page. But they are, they do have a stop work order again, Bill, I believe? So they're, they're, we're trying to catch up to them, but once they, no offense, once, once the, the horse is out of the barn, it's, we got to chase them down and get them back in, and that's, we're having difficulty.
It just looks dangerous.
Oh, it is. You're, you're, you're not wrong. You're not wrong, so.
Those are, and you have memos that, that's like that, so we're, we're trying.
We just, nothing was really said, so I just didn't.
I'm glad you spoke up.
That's fine, you can come up and speak up, it's not a problem. Have a good night. All right, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have to be, we'll take that as a compliment. Got to have, got to have a good laugh, there you go.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
I'd like to ask the board's permission to discuss two items that are not on the agenda that came up very recently. Number one has to do with flintlock ridge storage.
Okay.
Jamie Logue Giudice from Inside Engineering sent us a memo requesting an extension of time. Their approval expires March 8th this year. She's requesting the board's opinion as to whether she could be on the February meeting next month, but in approving the extension, it would run from the date of expiration in March forward to September, because basically, the meeting in March, actually, the actual expiration falls between the workshop and the actual public meeting. the workshop and the actual public meeting, so it would be perhaps fortuitous to do it in February, and have the dates start when the expiration occurs on March 8th, and then have it go through September 9th if the board feels appropriate, and if you do, we advise her as such.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering why they hadn't started, yeah.
Just been a lot of issues with a variety of different things.
Yeah.
The second is Longinadi, the board approved a steepsoak and residential control plan, and as is the board's custom, when fill is brought to the site, you require that be tested, and it's to meet unrestricted residential thresholds for cleanup objectives, and so, the Longinadi sought out a company to provide them with soils, and they did do soil testing on a sample, we believe, of the larger soil that might be brought to the site, and it did have one particular semi-volatile organic compound that was above the threshold of unrestricted residential site cleanup objectives. To my knowledge, the board has not accepted soil in the past, and it completely meets those objectives, but the applicant consultant asked me to discuss this with the board to determine if you would consider this, that it was only one particular component that was above the threshold, it was modestly above the threshold, and he felt, he indicated we could maybe cap the soil, what have you, but basically, you know, as I said in the past, the board's policies and process had been to not accept any soil that doesn't meet unrestricted standards totally, but I just wanted to bring that before you to see what your thoughts were, so I can advise the client.
What is, what is the chemical that they found? Is the chemical?
It is a semi-volatile organic compound, Kathy, and it's called indino pyrene, and it's actually 123CT pyrene, which is a semi VOC, and basically, it's part of the compounds that you normally see either with asphalt materials, cleaning fluids, things like that, that come into play, and again, being in the DEP watershed, bringing chemicals in or what have you, is also not advisable, so...
So, did they get the soil from a company, or did someone, they just have somebody come in and dump it there?
That's another interesting question, because basically, the soils, the photographs from the company that did the testing are from a small yard, of which there are some stockpile soils, there might be a couple of yards of this soil that they collected samples from to bring to the lab, however, the actual amount bringing brought to the site, according to what your John was saying, is a couple hundred yards, so, we don't know, I mean, there's what's called a chain of custody from that little small pile, that means they were bringing it from that pile to the lab, but is that a representative sample of the larger soils that are coming from somewhere else, and that's another piece that we don't know, so, you know, there's a few unknowns in terms of the soil in general, apparently, this is a construction company, Montesano, they're doing some work, and there's, I would suspect, a very cost-effective soil being brought to the site if the applicants choose to do so, it's just that it doesn't meet the standards that this board has set.
And please understand, they have not imported any material yet.
No, not yet.
They are following the procedure, in other words, they've gotta demonstrate before they bring it in that it's clean.
Oh, oh, okay, I thought it was on the site, okay.
But they want the approval to be cut loose to bring this soil in question to the site to be dumped.
Why would you do that, if we already know it's contaminated?
Well, the answer, you know, the answer comes from this board, not John.
Okay.
All right, so, yeah, so it's not on the site right now.
Correct.
And then, the last time, which was a different case, because it was on the site, and there was elevated levels of, I think it was arsenic.
Oh.
Tire trail?
Wasn't arsenic.
Yeah, we had, we had heavy metals on that site.
Yeah, something like that.
And also volatile organic mix on that site, yeah.
But then, obviously, if it's not on the site, what is this compound, what does it do?
It's a compound that's associated with, as I said, clean, cleaning operations, dry cleaning operations, asphalt, it's basically carcinogen.
No.
So, how is it even possible that it can be considered? Does it meet the requirements?
The answer, the answer, Giancarlo, is that it does not, however, I guess this
particular gentleman is saying, well, but it almost does.
The list of chemicals is about two pages, and this is one, and it's above it, but it's not, it's not like the limit is six, and they're at 700, the limit's six, and they're at six...
6.9 or something.
6.9, so he's saying, hey, the preponderance of material is good, we got this one little issue, but nonetheless, I mean, you hit the nail on the head, we've had people excavate 12 by 12 holes to get...
That was real butum.
...material off the site, so why would we encourage someone to bring something in that already has a hit? I guess that's, but again, Bruce and I don't make the final decision, that's up to you folks.
I would say no.
Do we have to put that to a vote?
Just...
Another informal vote?
No.
What's the consensus?
No.
The consensus is no.
I guess what I'm saying is, I haven't heard any yeses yet.
Emphatic no.
That's strong, that's strong enough.
There you go.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
All right, below the line, Melcher, you moved that to administrative?
The guy from, the gentleman from the monastery, no?
He's next.
Oh, he's next, okay.
So, Melcher, we're waiting for them to get their final paperwork in, I think they were working on the bond, were they not, Vera?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, they're done, but they're waiting. The monastery, they have made a submittal, they will be on in February, their engineer, and I think this gentleman dropped some large scale off, so we expect to see them in January, we do have the material, and it is reputed to be in response to our comments. Maracho, that's the subdivision with Mr. Chung?
We submit on February.
Okay.
Oh, I haven't seen it yet.
Just give me.
Okay, Mr. Ryder, I'm gonna skip that one for a minute. McMath, I think we're done, are we not, Vera?
I thought we were.
Okay, Nichols Road, Route 52, Nichols Road, we're still waiting for something from Jeff, and...
Or Megan.
Jeff, or is it gonna be...
It's probably gonna be Megan.
Megan.
So, I'll reach out to her and see what that is.
Sure.
Route 52, I suspect Jeff has transitioned that to Megan, I'll also reach out to her, because there was some give and take between attorneys as to some court issues, and then New York State DEP, New York City DEP, and Seven Hills, that's on them, have we gotten anything, Vera?
No.
Okay, so stepping back to Ryder. Last meeting, Bruce and I never generated memos, Bruce had a draft, I had handwritten comments, we were gonna forward them, providing we got some updated information, we really didn't get much of anything, did we, Bruce?
Well, what was missing was the actual application document, it kind of is the key to the door, you know, and so, we have since received that, and I think at this juncture, it's a very, we'll call it white application, a lot of stuff missing, but, you know, we could issue memos to that effect, I think that in some sense, the board's to cut us loose and do that, or to say, listen, we just don't have enough stuff, bring us some more things before we build it.
I would say that.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a lot of things, we're done, I think, in an effort to just get something before the board, you know, after a workshop, and meet the deadline for submittal, and just kind of put together that one, I think they can do a lot better with the submittals, so we can...
And I gotta be blunt with you, I would be kind of reluctant to issue even partial memos, because what happens is, people tend to give you the information in your memos, they see we're done, and I think it's incumbent upon them to read the application, develop the necessary supporting, we've given them guidance till we're blue in the face, so they know what's necessary, so rather than create a situation that says, hey, we answered your questions, now move us ahead, I think it's better for them to perfect their application a little farther, and then we'll review it.
Yeah, we might not be able to advise it, so this meeting, assuming we can go over it, try to give, at some point, we're supposed to finish line, get the application, it's complete, so this is... So, if you're gonna give a full vote on the use of...
No, you may get that one.
All right, so maybe we'll reach out to the applicant's department, John, well...
Guys are excited.
And so, hopefully, we can get this going.
Enough. Anything else?
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Excellent. Well, this most likely will be my last meeting as chair, you will be the new chair, and the new vice chair.
Thanks for sharing.
It's been a pleasure, gentlemen, like I said, I'll still be at the board, I'll make the motion to stop the, and the meeting, Mr. Seig?
Second.
All right.
Aye.
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 See, we sit, we feed on one thing.